Hello, me and Doris. First of all, roll call, please, Mr. Blake. Let's see. Councilman Craig?
Here.
Councilman Spurlock? Councilman Kaisler?
Here.
Councilwoman Chantet?
Here.
Mayor DeWitt?
Here.
He's doing it by looking at us.
Let's stand for the flights, one please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with every freedom and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded, moved seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have approval of events.
I'll make a motion to approve the minister from June 21st, 2018.
Seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to have no presentations and we're going to skip committee reports as we decided at our last meeting. We will have public comment though, but this will be public comment on things other than the item that we have under discussion on our intended item, the item. So I'll open the podium of the public comment for anybody wishing to discuss and make any public comments and anything other than the agenda item.
I just wondered, can I ask what the agenda item is?
It has to do with the sales tax for cannabis.
Okay, okay.
Peter R., 5859 Sacramento Avenue here in Dunsmere. Some of the restaurants in town carry promotional magazines, including Enjoy Magazine. I don't know if you have ever seen it before, but in last month's Enjoy Magazine, there's an article by Tim Holt, who we all know lives in Dunsmere. He's a very good writer. And the article is called "Hiker's Paradise: Mount Shasta, a Trail Town Designation." And it goes through all of the economic benefits to Mount Shasta having partnered with the Trails Movement for people to stay, for routes. The Trails Group has a separate website where they promote towns that have signed up to be a Trail Town. Tim Holt points out in his article that because of our proximity to the Pacific Crest Trail and other trail systems, including Castle Craig's, Dunsmere also could become a Trail Town and enjoy all the benefits that Mount Shasta has just signed on to. And I'm hoping for the Economic Development Committee and those of us trying to build the economy, that Dunsmere will become the second Trail Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Got close to closing the public comments? I'll start this time with Mr. Craig. Any comments you'd like to make?
Would you agree to what Peter just said about Trail Town thing? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I met with Megan Wargo, who is the Pacific Crest Trail Association representative. I'm not sure what her title is. A few months ago, I think I forwarded you an email or two about that a while back, when they were looking at establishing that. It was essentially a pilot program for them. And she wanted to know if Dunsmere wanted to be on that list of Trail Towns. And I said, of course, and met with her. And Mount Shasta had already expressed interest to her to be the first one by then. And so that's great for them. And they're even having an event on July 21st. Reason I know about this is because I didn't explain that. To celebrate being the first Trail Town. But my understanding is that the Pacific Crest Trail Association still wants Dunsmere to be a part of the pilot program. And when I last spoke with her, they were trying to determine what were the obligations to the city, whether they actually want the cities to do. And there hadn't been any follow-up on it since then. So essentially was they, my understanding is the ball was in their court to figure out the list of requirements and things that they wanted from the city. I imagine it's not much of a financial burden, but some resources would probably go towards it. And then hopefully we would realize some sort of residual benefit of having increased publicity for lodging, things like that. But my understanding is that that is underway and will continue to be so.
Thank you.
Pete, there's a, isn't there something that you sent in July?
Yes, July 21st.
We've suddenly had a lot of emails from you to encourage the people in town, the business people to represent. And so it's, it moves at that end. So I know, we know about it and the people, the Chamber of Commerce has notified. So it's not an unknown.
That's right. Well, we're on the subject. What I'll add to that is that as a member of the local transportation commission, I can tell you that we just passed a new resolution that we'll be putting in place from, I think, July 16th through the end of August. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So bus routes that will go down to Castella to pick up Pacific Crest Trail riders. This is a test program we're putting into place. And the idea is, is that if this works this year and it turns out that we get a good number of riders coming from the trail and going to the trail, that we would be able to work it into a permanent schedule next year. So that is basically going on right now. I believe that, I could be wrong on the times, but I believe the times are that there'll be a pickup at 10:45 in the morning and then a drop-off around, passing through Dunsmere around 6:35. So both of these routes will be going through Dunsmere and give everyone a chance to stop. The other thing I would say on the subject is is that from talking to people, one of the biggest things that would make us even more attractive as a Trail Town would be an operating laundromat. And I know we've had trouble over time keeping one of them alive. But if that would happen, that would be one of the key elements. I understand the people that are hiking look for besides food and places to eat. So with that in mind, anything else you'd like to talk to us about?
That's right.
Okay, Mr. Kaisler, ladies first.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than, I understand the whole city. I understand that the whole city of Hornbrook has been evacuated due to the fire there. So I know that it's a more rural area and if people have trailers, if they could help, you know, evacuate some of the large farm animals, that they probably could use some assistance. It's really horrid when we have, you know, such large fires moving through small towns with, you know, limited resources. And Hornbrook being, you know, so rural, I think, you know, on everybody that lives up there, their main concern is how to, you know, help with the horses and, you know, farm animals up there.
Thank you.
Bad enough as it is.
Mr. Kaisler, the awesome courage will often bring her with the best. As far as back to Mr. R.'s comment on trails, we have, we have already a little part of a program with the wounded warriors, where they go on a hike on a trail and they come into town. They, we pick them up. We bring them in and feed them. We house them. We take them back. Sometimes we run them up to Mount Shasta and go shopping and get supplies and stuff that are big blisters that they get. But it's funny, nobody calls me. I'm on this trail committee. And I haven't been invited to a meeting.
What's your name?
Find out about it tomorrow.
What trail is it?
The one, the trail committee. I'm on it.
Right, but I'm just saying the woman who called me has nothing to do with that committee. This is the Pacific Crest Trail Association, a big organization.
Okay.
And she only called me because I happen to know her from Craig's Creek. So, but I notified everybody when I met her.
It's not the Mount Shasta Trail.
It's not the Mount Shasta Trail Association.
This is.
Also on the 21st, I believe the meeting in California cities will be in Mount Shasta too.
I think the 20th.
The 20th?
Yeah. For the SAC division meeting?
Yeah. So that's all I have to say. I hope everybody had a great 4th of July. I know I did.
Moving over to our police force over here. Can we start with CHP, Sergeant Jeterne? Could you introduce?
Yeah, Sergeant Blanketje.
Microphone there.
You have microphone if you pass it up. Thank you.
Yeah, Sergeant Blanketje is with the Mount Shasta CHP office.
And do you want to share with us what you shared with us? Share with the folks what you shared about the stop up here and what's going on with the traffic?
Absolutely. And it'll be familiar to them for you. As long as you are familiar with the road construction.
There's a microphone right there, see it?
You're familiar with the road construction, Northbound Highway. And it's also going to start Southbound Highway. Mont Road has been closed to residents only. So it's a soft closure. It's not manned. So what it is, residents, as you know, there's probably a handful of residents on Mont Road. That's what the road is going to be used for. So like I said, there won't be nobody manning it. At this point, we're going to watch it, see how the construction goes and see if we can come up with a larger route. But as you all know, everyone has GPS and everyone has a cellphone. So as you're seeing, between one and five, usually Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you guys are seeing that backup. And we're going to be out there mitigated and take care of as much as we possibly can. But it isn't going to be in convenience until the episode. Is there any questions I can answer for any of you? Or any concerns?
Can you make Caltrans work faster?
I can try.
Thank you very much.
Did you say something, end of summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at it end of August. And this is going to continue for three to four years, depending on the riders. So summertime, they'll start up again. And as you know, in winter time, they can't work up here. So they'll shut it down and we'll be forward. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, climate does hear residents. And I always think even Mont Road, you get to Mount Shasta because I just got my battery on the freeway. Is that out for me?
As I said, it's a soft closure. So it's not manned and it's for residents. So as a sense, it's for residents only. But that's a good closure. It's, it's, there's three or four residents on that roadway. The roadway is not built for maintenance and handling much of the damage. We're trying to minimize the impact. And also the residents are not able to stay. As you come up there, as you know, it's an old street. There's no sidewalks. So our major concern is stable for the residents. Like I said, I'm sorry to say.
Yeah, we're talking.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Now, our new sheriff's town. R., would you go ahead and introduce and explain the situation?
I'll let Deputy Westine talk about it.
Okay.
Things are kind of in flux, so. It's my first one. I'm Deputy Ben Westine of the Sheriff's Office. I only had a couple of things to report. First, I would say that the 4th of July went pretty smooth here for the city of Dunsmere. Last night, we just had two arrests and several illegal fireworks calls down here. But for the most part, Dunsmere was unscathed as opposed to some other areas in the county. So it was, it was a smooth night last night for Dunsmere. On the other topic here, the Sheriff's Office is in a transition. I've just been recently assigned as Officer in Charge of Dunsmere. It's this last Sunday. Sergeant Merrill and I are working closely and is going to be kind of coaching me, teaching me the duties of the Sergeant for the city. So certainly under training for that. The transition is probably going to be 30 to 60 days before things are official and I will officially be taken over.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
Nice to have you.
Welcome.
Mr. City Manager?
I would just like to say that we don't have Julie here tonight. So we've got excellent substitute here.
Talk slow.
Talk slow. And we're recording with this device here. And also we have, of course, the recording for the website.
Julie's okay?
Yeah, she's, yeah. She's staying home and probably where Frank is. Not talking to the microphones because we may need to go back on these to get her a minute. So that's all I have to inform.
I will speak slowly.
And I have nothing to report. So with that in mind, we'll move on to the next item, which is why we're here today, which is, hold on, let me get to there.
Consent the agenda?
Yes, consent agenda. Put your motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, here we go. Next item, which is no old business.
No public hearing.
No public hearing. And so we're in a new business, which is Commercial Cannabis Task November 6th, 2015. Valuable. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to kind of summarize where we're at here with this. Back in January 5th, the city council set a goal to address cannabis, marijuana, at the time now cannabis. So since then.
Mr. Mayor, January 5th of 2017?
2017.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. So since then, the council formed a committee, the Cannabis Task Force Committee. And there's been a number of meetings that took place almost every, I think it was Tuesday or Friday. And in between the council meetings and the Cannabis Task Force meetings, there was a lot of talk about how this legalization of the commercial aspect of cannabis is going to bring a lot of money into the city. Now, keep in mind that the legalization of the non-commercial aspect, meaning the residential, people can grow six plants at home. It's legal. There won't be licensing from the city or anything like that. We're just talking about the commercial aspect. So through the process, there's been, almost every meeting, there's always talk about this is going to make a lot of money for the city. Well, time kept marching on and we're up to a deadline where we have to have a measure to the county by, I think it's the 16th or 17th of this month. And that requires the council's approval. We need four-fifths majority. We have four council numbers here. So if the city wants to make money off of the cannabis, the commercial side of cannabis, there has to be a tax. There's no other way to make money off of cannabis from the city governmental standpoint.
One clarification on that. This is not in disagreement with you, but there's also another area of income that will be there regardless of whether we tax. And that would be for sales of other items that aren't the actual product. Is that true?
No.
Sales tax for non-cannabis items? I mean, what the sales tax in the city?
Where are you going to?
Okay, I'm just curious about that one point. Go ahead.
Okay, so there are fees that once the, if the legalization of the cannabis commercial side of things continues to go forward and is adopted by the city council, there are fees. The fees are not the means of revenue generating. There are fees to recapture the cost to, put the law into that, into, in the cost of maintaining and inspections and such. So those don't bring any money into the city as revenue. They're really just to capture the cost. The only way the city can get revenue from commercial sale of any type of cannabis type of activity is through a sales tax or what we're doing today for the ballot measure. And this is proven by the voters, the majority of the voters. So the rush was on to get the language that we have two resolutions and an ordinance. The two resolutions are what the city would approve by all four members at this point to have the ballot measure added to the November election. And with that is an ordinance. The ordinance is what the voters will be voting on. So within that ordinance, the resolution does look at some of the key points within the ordinance, meaning what is the ceiling? What's the initial rate? So the ceiling of what the tax is. So the ceiling is the highest you can tax. You can't go higher than that. So the voters, when they go to the November election, they'll say yes or no. And with that, there is a limit. The city cannot tax higher than this. There, there's also what they have in the initial rate. So the initial rate is set by the council. There's an initial rate in the ordinance, but that can also be changed up to the ceiling, but no higher, and also down to zero by resolution.
Okay, on that note, the two, down to zero, that will take a unanimous decision. No?
No.
Just four-fifths? For it to reduce it to zero three? Three? Just take like, last decade?
So those are the two types of, so we have a ceiling that will be on the voter registration. We have an initial lift, an initial tax that's for upper consideration tonight as well. And we have, let's see. There is also being proposed on this for consideration, whatever the council would like to do, is looking to link, and it's in the ordinance, linking the passage of the sales tax to whether or not the legalization of commercial would be allowed in the city. So as it's written right now, is if it fails, then the legalization of commercial cannabis fails with it. It's not allowed. Now, this can be changed to where you can have it to, well, John Kenny might talk more to that. Yeah, I'll pass it. Those are the, there's the three options that I really wanted to focus on. What is the tax? Does the city want to tax commercial cannabis operations? Yes or no? Does the city want to tie the passage of the tax measure to the legalization of commercial cannabis? And then the third one is what should the limits and initial tax rate be? John's going to talk about the aspect for the.
Would you take a moment to introduce himself?
I also don't know who he is.
John Kenny? Also, if you would, also if you would, would you let people understand how he's been working on the side with the other cities and what that benefit has been to us? Because I don't think a lot of people understand how he thought about this.
Okay, John Kenny is our city attorney, our legal counsel. John Kenny's office is in Redding. And his, he's also a city attorney for the city of Shasta Lake and the city of Mount Shasta, maybe some other ones. And he's also obviously the city attorney for us. Now, the city of Shasta Lake has already gone through all of the stuff that we're going through right now. And they've hired some big wig consultants to help with that. And also the city of Mount Shasta has recently gone through this as well. So we've been very fortunate. I consider John the city of Dunsmere's expert as it pertains to the cannabis measures and what's going on in the state. So we're very fortunate to have him helping us along. And I have to say, the city of Dunsmere has been very fortunate to be riding on the coattails of a lot of other cities. And we're getting some big stuff on the cheap.
Correction, I am not a cannabis expert. Or the, or the regulation. It changes so fast that you can't keep up with it, both, both the legislation and the business of cannabis, which I totally don't understand. But anyway, but what Mark says is true. I mean, basically, the cities are taxing it and permitting it. And the legislation pretty much is, excuse me, pretty much is all the same. There's derivations in how the tax are imposed. And we can talk about that later if you wish. But there was, I made some changes in, we had, you know, last time we met here, we had a draft tax measure. And I made some changes in it because of some comments at the direction of Mark. But one of the ones, if you go to the ordinance now is that Mark was talking about, the section six, at the very end of the ordinance, it's called nullification. And the draft says, no commercial cannabis operations will be permitted in the city of Dunsmere if this measure is not passed by the voters. And I would recommend that that section be deleted. We don't, we don't date a cloud. The reason for it to be deleted is that the city should not be surrendering its authority. The city at any time can regulate cannabis, commercial cannabis, if they want. This measure would provide that you could not, under any circumstances, without a new vote of the people, no matter what circumstances change, what you might want to do or what some future city council may want to do, is you couldn't issue a permit for commercial cannabis if this tax measure doesn't pass. To me, that's just bad legislation. It's a bad policy for a city council to follow. And you notice, ever since we started this, we were trying to leave the city with as much local control as possible. This would be surrendering that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So who wrote section six?
I did.
Well, so what was the thinking at the time?
Well, there was a, there was a suggestion. Mark said that somebody might be interested in changing that. I drafted what it would be, but I said I don't support it. And I wouldn't recommend that the city council support it, but I'll draft the change.
Do you know if the other cities that, my understanding is that this is essentially very similar, if not basically the same as what was adopted in Mount Shasta? Did they have a nullification section?
No.
Did the city of Shasta Lake have a nullification section?
No.
Is there any other city in the city?
I'm sure there might, there may be some city somewhere. And the fact that some other city might have done doesn't make it a good practice.
Well, I agree.
Back to you, Ms. Brennan.
I would like to say, when John and I were talking about this section, one of the things that he offered up, if it's something that the city council wants to see something like that but not give up its whole authority, is to have some kind of language in there as well that would kind of put it opener where you could come back with the majority of the city council or four-fifths city council passed and have it brought back. And you may want to talk about that.
I wouldn't support that for the same reason. I don't think that the city council should be surrendering its authority.
But we surrender if you aren't descendants is the problem right there.
Well, if, basically, what you would say, what you would be saying is that the citizens will regulate that by referendum or initiative. We're giving up our authority to regulate that under those circumstances. to regulate that under those circumstances. And not, not only are we giving it up for this city council, we're giving it up permanently.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Mark, did you want to? Mark, did you want to add anything to wrap things up or?
Uh, just also to draw a highlight that the, the, the limits and the initial rates are substantially higher than what was originally proposed. Um...
I'm sorry, originally proposed by who?
As, when we came to the council initially, uh, at the last council meeting with the urgency item.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, that was sent out to the city council as an urgency item. Uh, we were able to get it to the city council meeting, so it wasn't presented. Uh, but the, the ordinance and resolution that went to the city of Shasta Lake and the city of Mount Shasta are lower than what we have here.
They, they, just for whatever it's worth, the, the maximum tax rate, uh, is just that. It's a maximum rate. Uh, the city council can reduce it at any time they want it by resolution pursuant to the ordinance. The initial rate, the same thing. The question is, you know, you have a maximum rate, well, if the, if the ordinance passes, the tax passes, split your initial rate. Well, it's in here, it's probably higher than a lot of city units. That also could be changed anytime, so it's, whatever you want.
So, if I understand, and just to kind of put another tone, a layer of clarification here, is that by giving us a, a high enough, um, of maximum rate, the ceiling, it allows us, again, to maintain the, the concept of the future city councils able to have the flexibility they would want and, uh, without having to go back and have a vote. So, the whole thing is based upon the idea of making, um, it possible for things to change over time without taking it to the, uh, to the ballot.
That, that's true. And I, I think, as I guess to reiterate something I said before, this, this whole industry is changing all the time.
If you want flexibility.
Yeah, uh, and, and the, the reality is, I mean, you can have, you could, you don't have to permit commercial cannabis. And so, if you say, "Well, I'll tax it real high so there won't be any," well, you can do that if you want to. But if, if the idea is, is to regulate it and tax it, then the tax rate is probably going to be determined by what's going on in the market. And you better have yourself some flexibility to address that.
Okay, uh, let me see if there's any questions from any council members before we get to public comment. Any questions?
I have one question. Um, so, my understanding is that what's being proposed here is a 10% cap, maximum tax rate on, I don't, I don't know if the people in the audience have read this as closely as we all have.
Well, you're actually the chair of the Cannabis Task Force.
Which hasn't been in six months.
So, why don't you summarize it since?
Well, but this is the first time I'm seeing it too, just like you. Uh, the Cannabis Task Force was not, never, never considered taxes. It's a point of frustration for me because, um, I wish that we would have. But I understand the deadline, that we are here now and, um, but I wish that, you know, there's, I don't think there's a single member of the committee in the audience tonight. Mari and I are the only two people here that were in any of those meetings, except for the people in the public booth that did the meetings. Um, but we never came to the subject of taxes. Uh, we were concentrated on getting the regulations done, which this council did pass, believe unanimously. So, the work to, to figure out whether or not we want this, this industry in Dunsmere has been done. We passed it. So, that, that's great work. Then we did this work to figure out the zoning. And this was very challenging. It took a ton of time. But we don't have the ordinance for this yet. We need the ordinance for this.
Yes, you do. You do need it, yes.
We do need it.
Everything that we've all decided we want and everything that all the work has been done.
Right. So, my frustration is that since the committee has not had a chance to, and it's my own failing too, I'm the chair of the cannabis, I could have called a meeting, but, you know, didn't feel like we had anything to meet about. Um, and so, I feel like it's a little frustrating because we're at the point now where we're up against this, you know, filing deadline. Um, but, so instead of doing a committee meeting, we'll do it right here tonight. That's fine too.
Let, let me do.
I'm okay with that, but...
I, I assure your frustration because that's exactly how it happened. Excuse me, but, uh, the committee and, and the city council under this ordinance can change things after the fact.
Right. I, I understand that. I appreciate the flexibility that's, that this ordinance has. Setting a cap, allowing by resolution, a change of the number. My specific question, I'm sorry, I don't need to...
No, it's okay. I wanted to hear your point on that because you did put in all that word with all the members, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, is there any flexibility on the other piece of the tax, the cultivation tax? Is that, is that a threshold as well, or is that a rate as well?
It's $3.50. Basically, the tax is $3.50 per dry, dry weight ounce for cannabis flour and then 10% for commercial, other commercial activity.
I'm sorry, but the $3.50 is the, is the maximum?
Yeah.
And if the initial is three?
Yes.
Okay. And on the other one, I'm sorry, and on the, just the cannabis industry tax, which is going to apply to retailers, every cannabis business, that is the 10% of gross receipts maximum and an initial rate of 5%, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
What, what were the, uh, rates that they're working right now in, in Shasta Lake?
I, I can't tell you. They, 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 they started them and changed them. They reduced them. So, I don't know what it is.
And it's leading down, is what you're hearing?
It has been, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have the, the city of Shasta Lake's number with me. I do have a list of cities here that I wanted to share with you. And I, it's far too long for me to read it all out loud, but, um, cities like, I'm just gonna say, Carson, Cathedral City, Pacella, Dixon, Fillmore, Gonzalez, these are all throughout the state. So, they're Hayward. I mean, there's a lot of cities on this list. Um, it just has their tax rates of what that was passed by the voters. The same thing that we're proposing, voter, voter-passed, uh, tax rates. And some of these are for the, the cultivation part, the dry weight ounce, um, and then the other part. So, I'm seeing, I, I, this is a pretty exhaustive list, but 5% of gross receipts, I'm seeing $15 per square foot of, of, that's a canopy one, um, $15 per square foot, uh, $25 per, per, per square foot for the first 3,000 square feet. Um, the city of Dixon did a 15% cap. They did the same thing. They allowed themselves the flexibility. But some of these cities' caps are 15, 20, 25%, or much higher. I'm not saying I'm proposing a much higher one, but there are rates that are a lot higher. Um...
That's good. That's good. Thank you. Oh, okay. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Here, I'll continue to public comment. Let's try and keep it under three. I'll try and get my Starbucks job working.
Oh, come on.
I know. Let's try and be brief.
Can, can we take a five-minute break so I can change out, so we can get this on film? Because I'm down to about five minutes.
Let's take a three-minute break.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, three minutes?
Three minutes, and then we open the podium to public comment.
Thank you.
And we can sit here if we want to. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order and we're starting the public comments.
Okay.
At the time, I'm taking away the comment about three minutes. Talk away.
All right.
On the advice of my lawyer, as he said, "That's what I should do in a wife's person. I listen to lawyers."
Leslie Wilde, 6200 Eleanor Street. Uh, I don't know if you guys heard, but a few weeks ago, my business was burglarized. And all my product and all my stuff was stolen and a lot of my office equipment and laptop and briefcases and lots of things. So, I was a bit at a crossroads. I wasn't sure what I was gonna do. Maybe that was the universe telling me what to do. But anyways, um, one of my collective members, a man named Joe Serna, he walked into my shop and said, "Don't give up. Um, I will help you renovate and I will help you, um, restock your shelves. And we can have a medical marijuana collective in Dunsmere." And it gave me hope. So, I decided to rejoin the business community. I joined the Chamber of Commerce and they said that we'll do a ribbon cutting and we're gonna fix the shop up, um, per the ordinance, every single thing that the city requires, we are gonna have. And I was very excited about moving forward. And, uh, about a half an hour before this meeting started, maybe an hour, I got an alert that somebody said, "You know, this little tax that they're gonna put on the agenda, it has a poison pill built in. If, if, if it doesn't pass, there'll be no cannabis whatsoever in, in Dunsmere." And I was, I was devastated. I really didn't know what to do. But I'm glad to hear Mr. Kenny say that he, as your lawyer, recommends that you delete the poison pill. Because I just want to remind you that 65% of the voters in Dunsmere did adopt, or did pass Prop 64. We are looking forward to taxing and regulation. And I do want to, um, push back on something that Mark said, that the only way to exact revenue from cannabis businesses is to pass this tax. That's not true. Everything that, that we sell will, will have sales tax in it and Dunsmere will get a benefit from that. Yeah, Bruce was gonna make that point anyways. And, um, I've had a lot of people call me, they want to buy buildings. All these empty buildings that have been in Dunsmere for years and sat empty, a lot of people will buy them and they will fix them up. And they might not make the million dollars that they think they're gonna make, but they're gonna buy our old buildings and they're gonna fix them up. And it will bring up the value of everything. And I, I really think that you should give, delete that one thing that Mr. Kenny says delete. Um, I think you should, Bryce mentioned, there's something in there about, in this ordinance, that talks about they're gonna tax cannabis, the dry weight, but then, if you read a little further, it says, "But it'll be weighed two hours after it's harvested." Dave, I think you know that that means that's wet cannabis. That's weighs 10 times more and, you know, before it's dried and processed. So, I, you should consider changing that. And, uh, I hope that you delete that. And otherwise, this will be the most divisive issue. And Mr. Kenny made a good point about, it's almost, uh, it's a hidden, it's a hidden referendum on Prop 64. Um, and he asked, Bryce asked who put it in the ordinance. And Mr. Kenny said, "Well, I did, but only because somebody told me to." And I'd really like to know who told him to put that in there. Because the voters have spoken, the, the task force spent a lot of time coming up with this ordinance, only to have somebody come behind it and find a secret way to go back to complete prohibition, because that's what would have happened, right? If the tax, tax didn't pass, this whole city would be divided. Once again, we'd have this huge divisive issue on the ballot. And I know something about that. And I'm moving forward past that. Uh, but I'm, I'm begging you, please don't divide this city up again between yes and no for marijuana. We voted yes on 64. We're taxing and regulating it. There'll be no smell. It'll be, it'll be highly taxed from all I can tell. And let's just allow that. And no more prohibitions. And, and please don't let Mario Robino talk you into the prohibition. And I think Mario's fingers, fingerprints are all over this. All of us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Other comments? Allison, back?
Okay, go ahead. Oh, go ahead. Hi. My name is Juliana Lucchese and I live in the city of Dunsmere. And then I also daylight as the city of Mount Shasta's seed planner. Um, so really quick, uh, the definition of the fresh ounce weight is the one weighed within two hours. That doesn't include dry ounce. So, two different things, um, that's in there.
Wait, 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 excuse me. You said fresh ounce and dry ounce?
Yep. So, if you look at the ordinance, they're two different things. So, the fresh ounce is what has to be weighed within two hours. And then dry ounce is something different. That's the dry ounce that you're used to when you typically ship a flower or leaf to an end-use retailer.
Where am I taxing? You want to weigh it in dry?
So, so, both. Yours, and I'll bring that up. So, right now, yours says that it's gonna apply the $3.50 per, per ounce tax to both. Um, and I'll get to my suggestions later. Um, so, right now, your initial rates are a little bit high for what would be considered a fledgling industry for your area. Um, a good way of thinking about it is consider a new coffee shop opening up where you haven't had coffee shops before. And then you're placing an initial tax on the coffee beans. And then you're using capital to pay for that as opposed to buying better equipment or hiring additional staff. So, I would recommend probably dropping, uh, those initial rates, which is what I'll put. You know, the cap, the, the top mark isn't really gonna matter. Um, and then, like John Kenny said, understanding the regional context of your cannabis market. So, Bryce had asked what we did in Mount Shasta.
I'm sorry. Can you pause for a minute? I, I just can't get my, my brain dirty.
Sorry, and I talked really fast.
Yes, slow down, Phil. Slow down.
Okay. So, the, the really important thing to remember is, so for, for ours, is nursery, distribution, um, and delivery is not taxed. We're not proposing to tax those at all. Because when you start thinking about the actual supply chain management of the cannabis industry, you would then be applying a 5% gross sales tax on your nursery products, which then go to a cultivator who then pay a per-dry ounce or fresh ounce tax. And then you have a distributor paying 5% on their gross sales receipts. And then you have your retail paying 5% on their gross sales receipts. And then when you consider the 15% sales, uh, state sales tax on retail, that's a 30% total tax added to an end-use product. Um, and so, for the city of Mount Shasta, and you don't have to do this, this is Dunsmere, um, we didn't tax distribution and nursery just because they're essential parts of the supply chain. And so, by just taxing cultivation, retail, and then we also, we taxed manufacturing. I think you should keep that. Um, you get a...
Pause, pause for a second. If, if any members of the council do have a question as we go, I'm gonna take the opportunity to add this wisdom right now. And so, if you have any questions, if it's all right, I'd like to be able to have you answer them and ask you. So, go ahead.
Yeah. And so, it's really important to look at how much tax you have on the end product. So, like I said, right now, how it looks is you're gonna be over 30% total tax added, because I didn't put in a dry ounce or fresh ounce estimate. Um, so, I would caution, uh, doing a tax on those initially. Again, like John Kenny said, yeah, we have the same thing.
Someone said, "Tax it, Ken."
Okay.
Okay. So, again, you can have the cap at whatever you want, but I think for an initial industry, starting small is better. Um, what the state's going to now is the state is lowering their 15% state tax because it's too high. Um, and obviously, the impacts of that are people are gonna rely still on the black market, or they're going to go to other regional hubs, which is Mount Shasta, Shasta Lake, and city of weed. Um, so, that's something to keep in mind when you go forward. Uh, so, my suggestion is to reduce the initial rate from $3 per dry ounce to 50 cents per dry ounce, which is still higher than ours overall, if you take it all together. And then 30 cents, uh, per fresh ounce, because when you have a fresh product, it has the water weight in it. So, you should tax your fresh product lower than your dry product. And then to reduce the initial rate for retail sales to 3% because that's what the city of Mount Shasta has our rate, initial rate set. And we're 20 minutes from you. So, you know, when you start weighing out how much money you're gonna make by putting 2% more tax on your retail versus people driving up the hill, uh, which is something to keep in mind. And then possibly, uh, you know, discussing and, and possibly reducing your initial rate for nursery, distribution, transportation, and delivery to zero. Because again, you're going to be basically double or triple taxing a final product. And so, when you look at that, the, the market's gonna be very concerned with your end product. Um, and so, if you're taxing that out. So, as far as ours, the only other thing we did different is we did a per-square-foot tax for our manufacturers. So, it's a, it's a fixed price. We can guarantee that we're gonna get that much per year. Um, and we began at $1 per square foot and we have a cap of $5 per square foot. All right.
Any questions?
Do we have your plan of, of city of Mount Shasta? You live in Dunsmere?
Yeah.
Um, is that the reason that you're speaking?
Yep.
I just wanted to know what you, what game you had in this.
I, I, frankly, I, I think that your initial rates are a little high.
Okay. Well, I want to know what your, you know, if you live in Dunsmere, then I will accept your, you know, your commentary. But as a, you know, planner for the city of Mount Shasta, and you're giving us all these rates that Mount Shasta did, you realize that we're not Mount Shasta.
Yep.
Thank you.
But you're very close.
I have a, I have a question. Hey, Juliana, with respect to the, uh, dry weight ounce, are you recommending that, that the dry weight part be deleted and just called ounce and weigh, a weight within two? What was your recommendation?
Uh, it was a suggestion. It wasn't a...
Well, whatever. If you, can you reduce your suggestion to a recommendation?
Just, it, the, the suggestion would just be to do a lower initial rate for fresh ounce.
You said from $3 to what?
Well, you guys are doing $3 right now. Uh, my, my suggestion is 50 cents per ounce for your dry and then 30 cents per fresh ounce. But, I mean, that's an arbitrary number. It's just a lot closer to what other regions are doing. Um, but again, I, I guess to speak to the whole, I do live in the city of Dunsmere. I'd like to see the industry take hold. It's a nice industry. It provides for a lot of jobs. Um, and then indirect impacts are improve city infrastructure. A lot of these industries are gonna come in and need larger sewer connections, larger water connections, additional testing points. So, they're gonna be investing in our infrastructure so that they can come to town. So, I'd like to see it actually happen.
And, uh, it's okay, I'd like to bring a little port of flag. I'd like to point out, because there does seem to be a point of contention. Um, I know that Mark, Mr. Bratton and I have, have met with Lucchese at a couple of meetings. And I know that she's from Dunsmere and that what she, from our conversations, what she's providing as information about Mount Shasta, it has nothing whatsoever to do with Mount Shasta. It has something to do with the fact that she's interested and she's interested in getting involved in the city and being more involved. And she feels this is the way to get the information in about what the, the market right next door is. We can decide to take that or not. But I don't think there's any other motive behind that other than sharing her passion for Dunsmere.
And I, I think the cannabis industry can be a good industry. It, it's pretty low impact if you regulate it correctly. And I think it could be very good jobs for a lot of people in the area.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sure.
I, I see in some of these other cities, they tied the tax rate to CPI. Is that something that you guys consider much access at all?
No. We try to keep it simple because we don't have a lot of staff. So...
Excuse me.
Go.
There's really no need to do that.
Okay.
I mean, you set the ceiling. The, the, the tax, the tax you're eventually gonna charge, you're probably gonna change from time to time. And as Juliana points out, it's, it's market-regulated.
Right.
You know, if the, the tax in Mount Shasta is 50 cents lower than ours here, then probably they're gonna take the business you're not. Your, your local people say, "Hey, you know, we're at a competitive disadvantage." And, and that's just between these two locations, you know, it's, it's gonna be a statewide industry. So, it, it's just a swag, if you will, at what the rates are gonna be. If you want to have, again, leave yourself enough discretion.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Other comments from the public?
Respected city council members, my name is Riva Stovai. I'm a retired physician here. And, um, I'm today speaking here at a, my concern is that from the Dunsmere point of view, I'm sure you are aware of the new charges of the city utility, on the city utility bill for standby water meter fee of $17.20. And if you want to go along with that, then I think the water charges should be, um, on the user basis. For example, and it shouldn't be imposed that you have to take 5 liters of water, which is about, um, 3,750 gallons.
How does, how does, excuse me, how does water relate to taxes for cannabis? Right now, we're, we're talking about taxes for cannabis. It's an agenda.
I thought it was a public concern, so I...
There was a public comment earlier, but we passed through that. You didn't say anything. And now we're at this topic, sir.
So, am I drawing time then?
Yes, yes. If you want to come and talk to us, and talk to the city manager in the office, he'll definitely be able to help you. But we need to stick on topic right now. This is only for cannabis taxes right now.
Oh, I, oh, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community, um, I will try not to be repetitive with regard to those that have already spoken in public, other than to say I would agree with everything Leslie said. And I also am in agreement with the most recent speaker, who said in so many words, "The city of Dunsmere cannot afford to do other than embrace the new cannabis economy." I said, "In meeting after meeting of this body, where all I hear from the members of the city council and the city managers can't, we can't do this because we have a whole lot of budget. We can't fix the sidewalks. We can't deal with energy efficiency. We can't deal with broadband. And to the point, we can't enforce our own laws." You're sitting here tonight talking about ordinances and resolutions You're sitting here tonight talking about ordinances and resolutions around cannabis, and whether you pass them or not, who is going to enforce them in the city of Dunsmere? The sheriff's office has bent over backwards trying to partner with the city in enforcing its ordinances, not criminal events, but civil events. So John Kennedy religiously says, "I don't understand the industry." He's a very smart man. "But on behalf of this client cities, there's money there. There are revenues available to a city like ours to lift us out of some of our worst municipal misery." I take the city of Weed as an example. I don't know if it's one of John's client cities or not, but somehow in the timeframe that started with Bryce and his leadership in the citizens committee, they got a later start, and yet they are so much closer to seeing the first dollar of cannabis revenue come into their coffers than we are. Why does that matter? Because public safety matters in this city. We have no code enforcement officer. If you look at the weekly newspaper, the city of Weed is hiring a code enforcement officer slash building inspector. Pay range $51,000 to $58,000, highly qualified. How are they going to pay for that position? With cannabis revenue. And yet here we are, six months down the road, and we have no application process that I know of. We have no path to yes. I know and expect that if cannabis activities are going to go on in the historic bank building I own, I will need to go to the planning commission and convince the planning commission, as well as the citizens and the fellow businesses, that this is something they want in their community. When is that going to happen? Is that going to happen next month? Will that happen three months from now? Investors are getting unhappy. To me, it is a lose-lose for the city. We're losing the revenues that, as several speakers have pointed out, through the hard work of council member Craig, the citizens committee, the council, John Kennedy. We've been ready to go since January, and here we sit, talking about poison pills in July. So I think it's regrettable that the committee was not respected, that we're not farther along with this. It is my request that the city of Dunsmere start holding workshops in the next two weeks with whatever applicant pool is left, with the notion, if you draw this out long enough, there will be no applicants. You will have lost the opportunity. The notion of being greatly benefited by riding on the coattails of other cities that got to yes before we did, I don't understand at all. I think you're punishing the citizens of Dunsmere and the businesses by the "go slow, we don't know" routine. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Terry Goggan, and I live at 5724 Dunsmere. Just as a follow-up to what we've all heard, sort of a threshold question here. Do we need two readings for the resolution, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
No.
It would be two readings for the ordinance, but the city council's not adopting the ordinance. It's submitting it to the voters for adoption.
So we could do it... We could have another meeting before the 16th.
It could be done. Yeah, I think the 16th is a deadline. It only takes one act.
We'll be doing that tonight. If we pass it tonight...
Pardon?
If we all vote out in four, all four of us vote yes on this, and we'll go on the ballot, that's all that needs to be done.
Right. So one of my suggestions was that there are some alternative financing opportunities for the city that could be considered, and we might need a little time, maybe working with the marijuana task force.
Well, there's no time for that. Right now, all of that can be handled by the task force later on. So all we're dealing with tonight is whether we're going to do something before the 16th...
Mr. Mayor, let's just let him finish.
Go ahead.
Thank you. What I'm trying to suggest is that the marijuana task force could look at alternative financing methods, one of them being a developer fee. Now, I have available an Orange County Register three-part series, a newspaper series, which discusses how the cities statewide are profiting from cannabis and the counties. And there are 18 counties in the state that have allowed cannabis, and only eight of these counties have imposed a tax, but they are making their money on development fees. Only 57 of the 144 cities in the state that allow cannabis are taxing cannabis. Instead, they're using development fees. And the development fees range anywhere from $36,000 net to the city of Berkeley in just a few months, to over $1 million netted in development fees by the city of Santa Ana in the same period of time, a few months. So the development fees are a real good possibility, and they can be negotiated on a project-by-project basis. And it makes a lot of sense for the city to be able to negotiate with individual developers, that it maximizes the opportunity to bring revenue into the city, and at the same time, it gives a certain amount of certainty to the developers as to what their costs are going to be. And it can also go hand-in-hand with a tax ultimately, but the developer fees are an option that could be explored by the city, and that was the reason I suggested that the task force might want to take a look at it. Other than that, I do think that $3 an ounce is a fee that could make a big difference in terms of the competitiveness of the producers in the city of Dunsmere versus the other producers in other parts of the state.
If I may, if the discussion had to do with development fees, I think the speaker was referring to development agreements that you have with, that cities and counties can enter into with applicants for projects. And some agencies are using development agreements. That does not preclude taxes. This tax measure would not preclude development agreements if, but there's some constraints on development agreements. But if the city chose a development agreement, it could have a tax and a development agreement. They could take the tax down to zero. They could have a development... If you had a particular project that required a development agreement, or a development agreement was well-suited for, you could waive the tax on that and address impacts on the city by the development agreements. This doesn't preclude a development agreement.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
I'm Carol Scalco. I live at 6278 Shear Avenue. And there are a few things I'd like to say first. First, welcome, officer. And I hope you're as wonderful as Lou has been. I'm so grateful for him. If you pass out, we'll... And Leslie, I'm sorry about your loss and for your business and everything that is entailed in it.
We're back, we're building back up.
Okay, and I encourage you to do so.
The Phoenix West.
I encourage you to do so. One of the questions I have, I'm just coming in late to a lot of this, but I wanted to know, since we're talking about commercial growing, and I am, what I'm in favor of, you know, I want to say I'm in favor of enclosed growing, where it doesn't hurt any, you know, nobody smells it, nobody sees it. I know people have the personal right to grow six plants. But even if, I know there are ordinance, if those six plants, you know, make a smell for someone living next to them, I believe there are rules that we can go by, or we can maybe force them to be enclosed, because we want to be good neighbors to each other. That's what we want to be. If you don't, if you live in the commercial district, you're not having a residential neighbor, you know? And so I want us to be good neighbors. The other thing I would like to ask the council is, is it legal to have a commercial grow in residential areas? Is it legal right now? From our past, from what past things you've passed in here, is it legal to grow in a residential area? That's a big concern of mine, as well as it does impact the taxes.
The question is, is it permitted? It hasn't been permitted.
I can answer that question as early as possible. The zoning matrix is right behind you. This is what we worked many, many meetings to complete. You can see how much here is not permitted. There are four residential zones, R1, 2, 3, and 4. R4 is essentially, there's a, I don't even know how many parcels are registered in R4, because like a few or something like that.
It'd be a high-end city residential.
It's high-end city residential. But it's mixed zoning for the most part. So we basically took, here's all the different license types. So here's cultivation types, and there's retail, distribution, and six, four different manufacturing, testing, and nursery. So you can see the matrix. It's not permitted in all R zones, any commercial activity, except in R4, there are three instances in which distribution indoor, this is the smallest category of indoor, the smallest category of outdoor, are permitted with a conditionally used permit, though it goes with the planning commission for approval. So there's a very tiny sliver of, and that was carved out for a specific reason, I can't get into it right now. But you can see that where it is permitted, it's mostly permitted with a conditionally used permit. And that's true for all of the cultivator and retail. Generally, it's right. It's all of the commercial.
Got it. Got it. Thank you so much.
From your standpoint, I was going to say, from your standpoint...
That hasn't been approved yet either.
That's correct.
Oh, I just wanted to know where it stood for residential. I have also the ball with the marijuana issue. My main concern is that anybody who has a private residence should not be adversely affected by someone's right to grow. And so anytime there's an indoor row, there's something enclosed, and it's responsible, you know, I don't find that horrible at all. So as far as the taxes are concerned, we, you know, the rents in Dunsmere are a lot less, this is referring to the city planners' reduction of them. Our rents are a lot less in Dunsmere. So, and we do need a lot more money than other places. I realize that you can accumulate it over a large, you know, business, you can get more money that way. But our rents are very low, and our buildings are pretty cheap, you know? So in that comparison, I think it kind of loses a little bit there. I respect all of you and your opinions, and I hope that we all can come together. I want that to happen. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you. And I would point out, Carol, that in your new position now, wherever it says conditionally used permit, you'll have 1/7 of the vote on that.
Okay.
Other public comments? Okay, I'll pose the public comment and turn it over to the council, who I'd like to let you lead the discussion here, give you some back, some control.
You're in control. I do have a couple of questions for some of the people in the audience, if it's okay still.
Charles.
Specifically, Juliana, can you give me the number that Mount Chasta did for the initial rate on the, you know, the overall? Is it a 10% cap? Did you say $2 or $2.50 or something was their initial?
Our retail cap is five, and we're starting at three.
Okay.
And then we divided our cultivation by dry ounce flower, dry ounce leaf, and then fresh ounce plant.
Okay.
And then we did manufacturing as per square footage.
Okay, thank you. So my very small brain has thought from the beginning of this that we are so closely related to Mount Chasta, you know, that buying market essentially is going to be very, very similar, that we should just be a quarter percent less than Mount Chasta. That'd be perfect. Wouldn't that be a good idea? But I understand there's other factors too. But, you know, I think, I'm okay with the 10% cap the way it is. I don't think we have to bring down our cap. Give us more flexibility, that's fine. And it's going to have to be approved by the voters, but, you know, why not a 275 to initial rather than a three? And then we're a quarter percent less than Mount Chasta. That's one. The other point is, I do think that we should try to address manufacturing as well as a separate thing, and I'd be interested in Mr. Kennedy's opinion, why it wasn't addressed in this ordinance. But as a per square foot? So it's just the same?
Gross receipts.
Gross receipts, okay. And then the other thing is, what, by what calculation do we, did this $20,000 a year number come from? That was the number...
It's in the ballot question.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I think I'll defer to the city manager for that calculation.
I have no idea what the city's going to make.
Right. But we have, what I was going to ask, I mean, we have people here developing business plans. You know, I'm sure they've done basic, not just cost projections, but revenue projections of their businesses and what they expect to make. Not that we should just take that as gospel, but wouldn't it be prudent to like get some idea about what these percentages mean in actual dollars based on what the industry thinks they're going to make?
Well, the challenge that I've been having in that number is we allow a lot more commercial activity at most places. We allow indoor commercial activity in R1, R2, R3, and R4. I don't think anybody else does. So I don't know, and we're also doing manufacturing, testing, distribution, we're doing the whole gambit. I don't know what that's going to look like. So the, what we're going to make, yeah, there's experts out there, but it's still the future. I don't think anyone's going to be able to give you an accurate number, but time will. If it's allowed, we'll know that number.
Okay, so to that point, I mean, I don't think that this $25,000 number should be in here.
Well, the reason it's in there is...
People are going to lock in on that, right?
Well, I didn't know what the number to put in. There needs, and I don't think anybody knows what the right number would be.
Are you sure we put that in?
No, because the election code requires you to put in an estimated number.
So it isn't...
That's a good reason.
That is the reason. It will not go on the ballot without some number there.
Okay. And the council can put whatever number it likes.
That's what I'm saying, it's all a number.
Can, I mean, could we change that to say that it is entirely unknown how much revenue this will create, but it could raise approximately $20,000?
Well, I suppose you...
Is that more or less going to make a difference?
I know it would make a difference, but I'm just saying, you know...
Let me say, let me say this to that. And if this, if you vote to put this on the ballot, I would like you to provision your resolution to allow the city manager to take minor changes, and it will satisfy the county clerk, because this will go up to the county clerk. And every time I put something on the Sujay County ballot, the county clerk just come back and said, hey, you need to change this, you need to change that. And the county clerk is the one that puts it on the ballot. So I'm fairly confident that the questions, it is now written, will satisfy the county clerk. We could try other things, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you for that. I didn't know that about the election, still learning of that.
But you can see the reason for it, but how can anybody give a reasonable estimate of what the revenue is? Who knows? Really, who knows?
I mean, I totally agree. I'm just saying, my inclination was that it would be more transparent and more clear to state that, that we don't know.
What number would we do?
Well, I find the number, but it's just, I'm just saying that if it were worded in a way that said, "It is unknown how much revenue this will create,"
You'd know when it gets locked in.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. People will lock in on the number, $20,000, people will lock in on that. But he said we have to put a number, so...
Mr. Rush?
Well, simply on point, I think you're misinforming the voters. It's crucially important for someone voting in November on these resolutions, if I go in as a wobbling voter and say, "The city's going to go through all this work and permit cannabis in my community, and all the community gets $20,000..." cannabis in my community, and all the community gets $20,000, I'm going to vote no. The $20,000 is obviously extremely low to be it as poison pill number two, to try and keep the city from going forward, and this informs the voters as to what will be the publicly available experience from the three communities that are already doing it.
Okay, I'll give it back to...
I mean it.
Bryce.
I'm simply asking that we try to craft this question, and I appreciate the work that you've done to craft it in this way, but in the most informative and transparent way that we can. So that's all I was striving for. I don't know, I don't think this necessarily misinforms anyone, but if it could be worded in a way that was more transparent and more clear about the unknowns about the revenue, because it could be much higher.
Well, and here's what I'm understanding...
Can we just put four more?
No. Hold it. Hold it. What I'm hearing is, is that by going low and being cautious and going low, what we end up doing is sending a signal to the voters that we're not going to really get what we would expect to get much out of this. So if we're going to go with a number that's going to be kind of pulled out, then we should come up with a number that's considered high. So what is a number that's considered high?
Well, I mean...
Hundred thousand?
No, I have no idea. I mean, the point of this is that we don't know, so we can either make up the number $20,000, or we can make up the number hundred thousand, they're all made up. But, you know, if you sort of backtrack here, which I haven't done the math on this, but if you just, you know, and we realize that we have a cap on the number of licenses that we're going to, that's in the regulations, right? It's three, three total dispensaries, and how many total manufacturing or cultivation licenses? The cap on those as well?
Most of it's unlimited.
Okay, so if you just looked at retail alone, and there, you know, because we know that that is what's going to be affected by the 3% or 2.75?
No, actually, retail is going to be affected by 10%.
No, the initial rate is 3%, 3%. Oh, I'm sorry, the initial rate in here is 5%, right?
The initial rate is 5%.
Right, right. I'm not talking about the cap, I'm talking about the initial rate.
You are discussing retail, and the number you gave is cultivation.
I'm sorry, let's, if we just looked at retail...
Retail is cap of 10%, initial 5%.
Right, so then if you just looked at that alone, and for the sake of argument, took out all of the rest of the cultivation taxes as well, what would that mean to get to $20,000 per year?
Right.
What would that mean?
Right, what would that mean?
So that would mean the industry is selling, so what, can someone help me out? What is, $20,000 is 5% of what number?
It depends on what you sell it for.
I'm sorry?
It would depend on what the gross receipt, so the percentage of the gross receipt.
I'm trying to get an understanding of what that gross receipt number would be.
Come on, Bryce, you're the finance guy, where's your calculator?
You mean Blake?
Blake.
How much does it sell?
It doesn't matter, it's a gross receipt. If, you know, 5% of the gross receipt...
$20,000 is 5% of what number?
Hundred thousand.
No, that's...
100,000.
20,000, no, that's 400,000. 400,000.
400,000.
So, okay.
That means that three businesses, three retail businesses in town would have to be pulling $400,000. Is that a reasonable figure?
Yeah, I have no idea.
I don't either.
Maybe someone in the industry...
Is that a reasonable figure?
Why don't you ask your business...
Yeah, exactly.
Go ahead.
Nice answer. Mr. Mayor, my name is Joseph Serna, I'm representing...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Everybody votes.
Come with me, Blake.
I'm here with the council, officer, Mr. Mayor, and everybody else I'm here representing Leslie Wiles.
Could you give your name, please?
Joseph Serna.
Thank you. And where do you live?
I will be residing here, actually, in Dunsmere as of the beginning of the month. I'm taking up residence, moving into town, and working...
Do you speak into, I'm sorry, thank you.
I will be taking residence here in the city of, New York City of Dunsmere as of the beginning of the month. I'm relocating my family and children here in your town to help my friend Leslie, who's been a great help with me and contributing to my health and will benefit and recovering from cancer. So in that aspect, I do have a lot of research and development done in the cannabis field. I've participated in numerous areas, and I've seen the number of growths expand tremendously over the last eight years. I'm sure that many of us here also have our ideas, and maybe some of us, we don't want to throw numbers up. I believe that we should pay taxes, I believe that things, the city should benefit from everybody's business here. What that number is going to be based on, you guys will essentially vote on and figure out, but there is a large number. The number that we are throwing is a very feasible number. I mean, let's be realistic, if it wasn't, there would be no interest in getting into the field. So those numbers that you are saying are very, very feasible. I mean, just, just along with the right marketing, the right product, you know, the right type of medication, and, you know, in accordance with all the state and local government laws, it's all totally feasible. I can't speak on, sorry, I can't speak on anybody else, but from my experience, I do know that I have seen it, I've taken and been a part of these building structures, and it's very possible for a town of this size to achieve a great opportunity in growth in the area.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you speaking on behalf of Ms. Wild's business?
Yes, I am.
Then can we get a figure of what her gross receipts are?
Well, right now, Leslie...
I don't have any gross receipts right now.
Well, what were your gross receipts for the last year before you got...
Not very much, but...
Okay, let's go back. Thank you very much.
We're trying to work backwards to figures.
Please.
I'm asking a question, Bruce.
I know, but I want to get back to, or, go ahead, ask the question.
I asked whether he was speaking on behalf of Ms. Wild's business. The question at hand was, we're working backwards to coming up with a figure, and we were talking about gross receipts.
Yes, ma'am.
And 5% of gross receipts, we determined going backwards that it would be 100,000. So I just asked, Ms. Wild actually has an ongoing business, what were your gross receipts for the last year before you got burglarized?
If I may, with respect to that question, this is not a sales tax, but by logical extension, we cannot release, the city cannot release the sales tax returns from various businesses, and...
We can't even ask it.
Yeah, we ask it, but you can't release it publicly. And we will probably be getting soon, in some locations, public records requests with respect to the gross receipts from these cannabis businesses, and the issue is going to come up, whether those should, and I think the rationale is true, that they should be treated the same as we treat gross receipts from sales taxes. So then it's confidential, it would be considered confidential information, so I'll be careful about releasing that until we know that it's safe to do so.
Okay.
I'm saying... No, that's all, thank you, sir.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
How about, this is just a shot in the dark of what the revenues are going to be. You have to know so much now, but how about something like this? You raised the concern, assuming we could get this past the county clerk. On the ballot measure, do you have that in front of you?
I do.
Right, so see what says the cannabis business, which may raise approximately $20,000 a year?
Yeah.
How about saying, which may raise, which will raise an amount that is difficult to estimate, but may be approximately, and then fill in a number, maybe 80,000?
No.
It's whatever the, I don't...
How much does Chester Lake make?
No, come on, I'm back to just the council.
Chester Lake doesn't have a lot of these fees, none of these fees are being collected yet, so we don't know.
What is your question?
What's what?
Could you read your question?
What I change? After the word rise, raise, I suggest an amount which is difficult to estimate...
So...
But may raise approximately, and then fill in the blank.
How about 50,000?
We're just pulling numbers out of the air.
Yeah, I mean, could I...
It's all out of, every number's out of the area.
Correct.
Okay, I agree, we are just pulling numbers out of the air. We can backtrack and kind of make some estimates, and that's as good as guess as any, but, and we understand that, you know, if you had four businesses, that would be 100 grand a year, because the number was 400, just for the retail, and then we have the other ones on top of that, so that would generate over, you know, how much more, we don't know exactly.
Right.
But, you know, I would be comfortable with a number between 20 and 40, that seems fine to me, but can I...
No.
What's number 21?
I'll go with 25, that's it.
It's still...
I'm sorry, I have to go with you. 24, here, go up to 25, because I have that figured out.
Okay.
I actually put some numbers over the weekend.
Explain your position, and then I'll get back to that.
No, you, I said, I said I'll go with 25, and I'm not going to go with 20.
And why are you going with 25?
Because I've done some number, I've done some testing.
Okay.
From the perspective of the city, obviously, we want the tax revenue to the city planners to be as high as possible, that isn't going to force people on the black market and, you know, be too disruptive to the industry and cause people to go elsewhere, and there is a sweet spot. So I'm, again, I'm very happy that we're giving ourselves a range, which is very smart. This particular wording, you know, it's a minor point overall, and there's more to consider in this ordinance than just this. But, you know, I like, I like Mr. Kenny's suggestion, just putting in, in the reading. Some people get their ballot and they, you know, they just read what's there, they don't have a lot of the context. So putting in that uncertainty, I think is, you know, if we can get that past the county clerk, then I'm for it.
Are you good with 25?
In terms of the number, I'm fine with 20, frankly. I mean, it's 20 to 40, you know, it's going to be somewhere there probably, but we don't know.
Mr. Quester?
Can I just finish one point? I do, we need to take care of this business of the section six.
Well, I want to stick with, I want to stick with this right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure that before we...
We'll fix it then. Okay, this is your, what is your thought?
I won't take into consideration what Mr. Harz said about the, I'm going to say average citizen. Someone who's really not involved into this, the little old lady that's watering the plants downtown, okay? She sees that ballot, $20,000 title, and she's like, we're going through all this for 20 Realistically, we don't know, but it's a new industry, and I kind of really see that this industry is blooming, everybody's embracing it. I think 20, the wording is Mr. Kenny said, and saying 20, hopefully approximately may raise between 20 and 40,000 dollars. That would make your average citizen go 40 grand to fix some sidewalks.
Yeah, I have one question, I have one question related directly to your point. Is it possible, it does, the question already says that it's a general tax and will be used for general city services, but could you, not to get too lengthy, but could you put, could you put in there which could be used to hire a code enforcement officer? I mean, that doesn't tie anything...
No, but that would be a convincing thing for the ballot, too. Everybody wants to get an enforcement officer.
What you want to do, I think, is have this be a general tax. So you start listing special uses, it would be, could be characterized as a special tax, meaning you can't use it for anything else, and you have to have a two-thirds vote.
Even if it were worded in that very...
Even if, if the response to your question is, let's try it, if we get sued, I'll let you know in five years.
Well, the point was, there is obviously, you know, we all want to be able to do more code enforcement, and, you know, if we could do that, I would be in favor of that, but frankly, in the interest of moving on, I'm fine with Mr. Kenny's suggestion, putting in the uncertainty statement, and if you want to go with 20 to 40, or just 25...
How about 20 to 30? Can you settle a compromise, 20 to 30?
It has to be one figure, 25 is...
I don't...
Over 25, that's it.
I don't know that it has to be one figure, a figure has to be in there, I've never seen one with a rain, but I don't, it might, it might work, I don't know.
No, we're setting a precedent, 20 to 40. I think that's convincing.
I think that...
She's not going to go with 20 to 40, I'm asking 20 to 30.
I'm really taking into consideration what that man said, how the people seeing $20,000 on the ballot.
You have a point of expertise, Dave, either.
Yeah, well, I'm seeing him pretty much make money kind of all between ranges, you know, depending on how much tax, but the whole thing right now is too massive.
How about settling at 25?
I'm fine with 25.
Dave, 25?
Yeah, I guess, I want to be a team player.
You know, it says approximately, and it's...
But I do want, I want the people...
We've gone up.
I said, man, whatever you all decide, I'd give the 20 to 40, it'd be like, you're going to raise an eyebrow, you're getting, it's like fishing, man, reel in.
Okay, how about this? Let's try this approach, why don't we go with the 20 to 40 if we can get it in there, and if not, we'll go with the 25?
Yeah, I think that's great, that allows, we've given that direction.
With the wording that he said, it says, which is direct to, I can't read my own scripture, but may raise approximately 20 to 40,000 dollars per year.
Fall back to 25, so it's a compromise.
Yeah, I think, is that okay, Monty?
Yep.
Yeah, 20 to 40, and it's going accept a range.
And your thoughts were...
We'll wrap it all up later, but thank God.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
No, no, we're right now.
We have a question.
Okay, go ahead. Three-minute break, all the conversations. Have you ever got to wrap it all later? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can wrap it later, rather, right? Back to order.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm very happy that we're working through this. Again, to reiterate the point before, this is the kind of thing that, you know, we could have worked through at the committee level on a workshop or something like that, to try and get some of these numbers more concrete before bringing to the council, but you guys are doing a great job, and I want to say thank you for working through these numbers, because I think that's important.
I would like to back around that. Thank you, everybody that's participated, and the community for getting here today where we're at now. Things are about to change, and I think it's for the better, so they will look back on these days and go, oh, they're going. I have a question. What's this resolution number?
No, we're not going to do that.
I just want to put a number up my head.
Do you know, Blake?
Julie will do it, I'll sign it.
Why don't you just make it 19?
18 dot 10.
Okay, listen, here's what we're going to do now. Change course. We've talked about the poison pill, that's what it's being called. How many people on the council right now feel a reason to want to move forward with that?
I don't know what you're talking about.
We're talking about the idea that we tie the existence of commercial sales to...
So we're now talking about the wording, it's not the resolution.
Right.
Right, I know, but...
And it's all for the major issues right now.
Are you talking about section six?
Section six.
I make a motion that we omit that.
I agree. I second.
Second, any discussion?
I don't want to do that again.
So you're going to put that's the office?
I'm sorry?
Does this have to do with...
Hold on, hold on.
Don't approach it that way, that's not what we're talking about, go ahead.
What's this to do with putting anybody out of business?
No. As was said earlier, the point of this is right now, that if this gets put on the ballot, there's a chance that if we don't get 50%, no council, the future will...
I have heard you don't do it.
Okay. So, and you want that to be possible?
I want the voters to decide. No, it is.
No?
The voters have not decided. The voters have decided on proposition sixty-four. Sixty-four changed so much, that isn't even what we're discussing right now. We are discussing having a tax on cannabis business and if the voters themselves do not pass a cannabis tax, why, what are we doing even contemplating having a commercial business in such a small town?
Can I address that question?
Let me, let her finish.
After I finish.
Certainly, I just, thank you.
So, no, I, I'm, I, I know of at least one other city that has tied council office on the coast. City much bigger than ours. They tied their, uh, their, their ability and they put it in front of voters that, um, if the voters did not even want to pass, you know, a simple majority tax. You know, and it just sort of became a moot question as to why they're worried about considering having a commercial cannabis business in their city. If they couldn't even raise any revenue.
And so you think that that should be decided by this group of people forever?
It's not forever.
Well, it is. The point is, is that if we decide right now that no cannabis grow, everyone's gonna leave.
No.
To come back again, we have to reintroduce everything that we've done up to this point.
And here we are, we're all for creating.
It's up to the voters. I, I'm, I'm pretty much up to the voters to decide whether these voters wanna collect, you know, a tax, a simple tax, simple majority. That means that the people that are really proponents of this, they have to go out there and eat their doors and, you know, have them people understand that they want to pass this tax. And if that tax is passed, then it opens the door to everything.
I'm going with the advice of the attorney who said drop it.
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
No, hold on. Yeah, Dave, come on up.
I mean, that's one.
Dave? What? Bryce.
Okay, I do, I wanna, I wanna address.
So I guess I'm finished.
You're finished, yes.
I guess so, because you just decided that when Dave interrupts me, then I'm finished.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor? I, I don't wanna start and I don't want anybody else to start until Marty is finished, so.
Yes, go ahead.
If you're finished, I do, I, there was a couple of points that I wanted to address.
I wasn't finished. Mr. Keisler decided to interrupt me.
Well, I am. Finished.
Do not talk to me that way, okay? I have just as much right to discuss anything as you do, Bruce.
I'm saying, let's stop discussing.
I said I was discussing that I am for the citizens to make a decision on this. If the citizens cannot even approve a simple, a simple majority, a tax on cannabis, then we have no business even trying to have a, uh, commercial, uh, business in town. We're a small town. Yes, Bryce, I'm finished.
Thank you. Okay. Um, there are a number of reasons why we would not wanna have section six in this ordinance. Mr. Kenny spoke to one of them already, that we're ceding the authority of the city's council, which are the representatives of this city. We were all voted and you were voted in by huge margins. All of you were. I think I squeaked in somehow. Uh, and, and, and we are charged with making the decision. So that's one. We live in a representative democracy. We don't live in a direct democracy. If every single issue, whether the tax rate for this and it had to go to the citizen, I mean, taxes do have to go to the citizens. That's all right to, to, to get on the ballot. The, if, if, if all of the work, you know, that we did on that committee, come up with this, could be done because we couldn't get enough people to turn out to, to tax it, I think that would be a total shame. And based on the work that you did. Um, the other reason is that this is not the only revenue to the city. This is a new industry. So if we had, let's say we had a different new industry come to town and they sold products, that would increase the sales tax revenue. If it were a new industry, that'd be new sales tax revenue that is not tied to this industry tax, right? A general tax on these goods. Even if, even if the tax major were to fail, we still, as a, as a city, through our representatives, decided to come up with these regulations. For that to be undone by tying this to the taxes, I think, is wrong. Now, listen, when I first read this, my initial reaction was exactly what you said. It was, well, if, you know, the cannabis industry is gonna be more motivated to get out there and pass this thing if this is in there. But as I thought more about it, I, I don't think that's a reason to include it because of this, all the reasons I've stated, that we, we can't cede that much authority, uh, by, by codifying it in an ordinance that's passed by the voters, we're doing more than nothing. We're actually saying that to undo it, we now have to go back to the voters just to get the regulations undone again. Or the, the, the lack of regulations.
Yes, I understand.
Undone. So essentially, I, I think that that's not what we should do. Um, yeah, and especially given how contentious the issue is, you know, I think through the committee process that we undertook, through, yes, Prop sixty-four, a large majority of the citizens voted in favor of taxing and regulating this industry.
I don't believe that they voted on taxing, Bryce.
Well, I mean, that was included in sixty-four and has been included in every justification that I've seen for the passage of sixty-four. So, I mean, you know, that's why I voted for sixty-four, cause I wanted to regulate and tax this industry. Sales tax will generate some revenue.
Sales tax on what?
I'm sorry?
When you say sales tax, could you be a little bit more?
So, so if, if the.
Could you be a little bit more, um, expansive on what you consider sales tax? Because this is considering sales and transactions.
Four hundred and sixty-two thousand, just on a bad.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that if there was a dispensary in town that was selling adult-use recreational marijuana, wouldn't that be subject to a sales tax? The, the same sales tax that when I go buy a can of soda?
Yes.
Yes. So, so we're not saying that this is a diversion of, this, we get the same amount of funds, this is a new industry. You know, so, so the additional sales tax increase, there is a portion of that that goes direct to, to the city's coffers, correct, Blake? Don't we receive sales tax in the city of Dunsmere?
We receive sales tax.
One is, one is, one is sales tax that the consumer pays.
Uh-huh.
The other one is a tax on the business.
Right, and I'm saying that.
And so there, it's a separate issue.
Right, and if we include section six, right, and then we put it to the voters and the voters for some reason, because it says twenty thousand or whatever other reason they come up with, don't wanna pass our version of the tax, then all of the, then, then, then those consumers don't have the option to pay a sales tax. Because there will be no recreational marijuana or medical marijuana for sale in the city of Dunsmere. It will have undone everything that we've worked for. So.
Correct.
So I don't think we should do that.
Are you trying to interrupt me now, Bruce? I'm talking to, uh, I'm talking to, uh, everybody likes to interrupt.
Thank you, miss, I apologize. So, listen, I don't think we can move forward here with, with this in, in the ordinance. Um, and, and because, and this was news to me, but we need to forfeit this vote in order to pass the, the resolution, then, then we can't move forward with, with this in the ordinance because, uh, it's, we're just not gonna get there. So I think that, you know, who does, who does keeping section six in here benefit?
Miss Wallace and the city.
No, keeping section six in here, in a, if we has it, we keep it in there, who does that benefit?
The voters make a decision.
But they get to make a decision regardless about the issue at hand, which is the tax, not the regulations. The city council has already acted on, on the regulations. Why put that, why tie that to this now?
Because I don't think that the citizens actually are.
That, just kidding.
Well, Bryce, you and I disagree on this issue, okay? I don't malalign your thoughts on it. I have gone through the same thoughts myself. But I just happen to disagree.
I understand.
So what I'm assuming here then is, is that at this point, am I correct in the fact that the three of us would not wanna go forward with that?
I, I, this, this makes no sense to the citizens to do this. I'm sorry, it just doesn't.
Mayor, make a point here and I guess I brought it up in the first place.
Yeah, you kinda did.
But it's in there. Um, and it would've come up anyway. Uh, my, the, the, I think, point is all taken. Uh, the tax measure is whether the citizens wanna tax it or not.
Yes.
That's the tax measure, okay? Uh, this says, somebody said, wait a minute, this is an opportunity for people to say, I don't want it at all, which is never, was never intended. And if somebody wanted to do that, that would be appropriate subject for an initiative or a referendum. Uh, what this does is, would have this city council basically surrender, or authority they have about the ability to permit cannabis business in this town in the future. Now, somebody could say, well, why would we ever wanna have a, a cannabis business in this town if we didn't tax it? Well, I don't know why we would or we wouldn't, but that's a decision, a question you could ask yourself when that circumstance came up. You'd hate to have a circumstance come up where, where somebody said, gee, you know, I would really like to issue a permit for this or for part of this or something like this. And somebody says, well, I'm sorry, you surrendered that right a long time ago. You can't address that issue because you surrendered the right to do so. So I'm, I'm opposed to this type of language in any, uh, ordinance that goes to the voters because I don't think the city council wants to tie their hands, or should be tying their hands, and future city councils' hands, assuming, because you assume that you can see the future and you know what's gonna happen.
I have an open mind, make me change my mind, Bryce.
Well, I, I'm trying.
I know. Give me a good enough argument for me to, to change my mind.
Well, you know, I, I agree with you that, that in a democracy, we should have.
Just stick the fence.
The rule of the people, right? But, but we, we have done that and I think that the process.
No, we haven't done that.
Well, I think that, you know, I, we send Doug Lamalfa to Congress to, to act on our behalf, right? We send representatives to make decisions just like this at the federal level and at the state level. And the citizens of this town do the same thing for, for us. So we have already done this work, uh, on behalf of those citizens. We had, um, you were at all those meetings and we did that work. And, um, and I don't think that that should be undone by, by an ordinance that is, you know, related to the taxation issue regardless. This can, this is, to me, this is just putting something in that's unrelated, you know, through the initiative or referendum process, that does seem like the more appropriate way to undo some council action, should we want to do that. In fact, that's the state law.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why would you want to have a business, a commercial business in a very small city that's strapped when, if the citizens by a simple majority turn down taxing it?
Mr. Kenny?
I didn't ask Mr. Kenny, I asked.
Well, uh, off the top.
You need that.
Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenny, can I just answer this briefly? Off the top of my head, the, why I would wanna have an industry where the citizens, um, voted not to tax it specifically, but still have that industry operating in the city?
Right. If we can't, if the city cannot raise any revenues from it.
Well, but I, that's the part, that's the point on which I think there's disagreement because the city, this is a new industry and the city will certainly gain some sales tax increase based on this industry. How much? We don't know. Uh, it could be quite a bit, assuming we don't tax it too high. It could be quite a bit.
The, the, the sales tax that you are discussing is a sales tax on consumers.
That's correct.
And that's pretty much tied to, you know, county tax and, you know, city tax. Right now, it's running about seven point five percent.
That's right.
And that's what the sales tax would be on consumers.
Right, and I'm.
And the consumer's sales tax would be on whatever they would buy from Leslie Shop or Peter's proposed shop.
Mm-hmm.
On retail.
And they would not be allowed to do that if this were a condition, right?
That's what you're talking about.
That's correct.
Is just a, you know, one is on consumers, the other one, this, what we're talking about is a tax not on the consumers, but on the business.
We're talking about both. We're talking about both because if we include section six, we're talking about both. If we don't include section six, then we're just talking about taxes on cultivators.
Mostly, mainly, we're talking, this whole, this whole ordinance talks about, you know, collecting tax on the people that cultivate, manufacture, distribute, transport, and sell this particular product.
Yes, the whole ordinance talks exact about that, up to section five. But section six doesn't talk about that.
No, section six talks about, you know, tying this to the voters approving this business tax. My question to you was, why would you want to have an industry that you cannot collect any revenue from, that is going to tax? When I say tax, I mean figuratively, put more strain on the resources and the citizens cannot by a simple majority, you know, pass a, you know, tax on that business.
I, and I'll attempt to answer that as briefly as I can, but.
Well, you don't need to be brief, that, that time to be precise.
So what you just asserted there was that, um, the, the recent, a, a small city with limited resources, why put that additional burden? But that's a separate issue, right? Because the business license fees and.
The city can't make money off of that. You know that.
Right, but that covers that burden that you just mentioned.
No, it will, it will, it will try to mitigate that burden. But you know, as well as I do, that the city cannot make money off of the licensee or the regulatory fees. The only way that the city can make money is by a tax on it.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to answer your question and, 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 and get to a point where we can agree on the facts. The state law is very clear. It says that you must charge a regulatory fee, a business license fee that's commensurate with what it costs you. And in the first year, we don't know, but in the second year, we'll know more, and in the third year, we'll know more. And we'll be able to change that. And that, you know, that's what we need, that's more work that we need to do to set those fees. But that is a separate issue. What it costs this city, the burden on this city, should be recouped by the industry itself. And we have representatives from this industry saying they're willing to pay above and beyond that, the developer agreements, to get more revenue into the city's coffers. So I'm not super concerned about that. I recognize the financial position the city is in and that it will, will have some regulatory burden here. We're gonna have to send people out for inspections. We're gonna have, hopefully, some code enforcement happening. But that is a separate issue. That should be covered by the industry paying those application fees, the business license fees and all that. I'm, I'm putting a box around that and saying that that's gonna become a wash because that's what state law says it must.
Well, it should be a wash.
It should be a wash. It should be a wash.
Think that that's gonna happen, but yes.
It should be a wash. Now, so the other part of it is, if the ci, if this goes to the voters and they say, we don't wanna tax it, for whatever reason, the, the, the simple majority fails, then we still get sales tax from this new industry. It's an increased sales tax revenue.
Consumers.
From the consumers. That's exactly right. It's a whole new industry. So let's say that our sales tax is at a hundred thousand dollars a year right now and then we have a new industry come in and people are purchasing more.
Did you go back that figure? Wha, wha, what do you think our sales tax is?
I'm, 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 I'm making a.
Well, why don't we, why don't we deal with realities and stuff?
I don't know what is our sales tax revenue in the city. I don't have the number. But for the sake of argument, my, my, my analogy that I'm about to make doesn't rely on real numbers. Let's say we make ten dollars right now and this industry comes in and provides ten percent increase in our, uh, in, in, in what people are buying. And then, not to mention all the residual benefits. If this industry brings more people to town, they buy some marijuana, cannabis at a dispensary and they patronize a restaurant. There's residual benefits that are totally uncomfortable at this point, but, you know, pretty logical.
Right, that's logical. If somebody comes into town, they.
Right, so.
Or one day they like spending money somewhere else, do I, I.
Of course, so, so that, that alone, for me, is reason enough not to, uh, not to basically say, there's, there's this vehicle through a, through an initiative that the city council puts on the ballot to undo all the work that the city council has done. I think that's just a separate issue.
That pretty much sets my feet in some air. You know, I wish you'd get off of that kick.
About what? I'm sorry?
I wish you'd get off of that line because that doesn't sway me whatsoever. Is there any way to mitigate this without taking it completely out? Mr. City Attorney?
I missed the question, pardon me. Is there any way we can do, mitigate?
Outside of taking this, you know, section completely out. I know you don't agree with it.
Uh, yeah, but I wanna, can I say things before I?
Of course you do.
Uh, we, we're talking about a sales tax. This is a special tax, okay, on a special industry.
Right.
So.
Well, it's a general tax, not a special tax.
Excuse me, a different tax on a, on a spec, a different industry. But we don't, every, every industry that wants to come to town, we don't say, you can't come here unless we put a special tax on you.
Right.
This is, this is different than that. Uh, and with respect to the notion that, well, why would we ever wanna permit a business that doesn't, that doesn't have this tax? We probably do that all the time, or we'd like to do it more than we are doing now, but we will do that. The business comes to town, new grocery store, they're not gonna pay a grocery store tax, they'll pay a sales tax or whatever else, but they're not gonna pay, uh, a new tax. So, uh, and of course, the question is whether you wanna permit it or not. You have the right to not permit it at any time, but what this would do is say that you've surrendered that right. You're not saying, "I don't wanna permit it." You would be then saying, "I can't." I don't think that makes sense. That's, that's my problem with the ci, with the city council willingly surrender, surrendering their discretion.
So, right now, we have three people who don't want that to happen. We have one person who make that possible.
Well, that's, yeah, so, you know, we have one city council member deciding that for the city council for the future.
Can we table this?
No, well, you can table it. You could do this, I suppose, as a compromise. You could say, you could, that no commercial cannabis operations will permit, be permitted in the city of Dunsmere. If this measure is not passed unless approved by a four-fifth vote of the city council. So, you would have a higher standard if you wanted to do that.
Okay, prevent that line.
So, this, this, the, the section now says that, well, if it doesn't, if, if, if the measure doesn't pass, then the city council can't permit-
I'm sorry.
Cannabis cannot permit.
I know, but it's, but to your point earlier, isn't that just such a convoluted way of drafting laws, legislation to, to put that in there in, in the first place? It confused the issue? I mean, we already have enough problem just writing the sentence.
The question was whether there's mitigation. There's mitigation on it.
Okay, and, and, I'm sorry, I'm not making the point to you, I'm making the point to Marty, I guess.
No, I'm sorry.
Which, which is that, that, you know, another clause in there to create a higher threshold by which the city council could overturn that decision by the voters.
Right.
I mean, that seems totally anathema to, to what we, the way we would-
We could just do that by having a table and bringing it up next week and give a four-fifth vote of the council.
Well, we, we don't know that we could get a four-fifth so, so-
Well, that's one of the options, is what I'm saying though, but I am not gonna see the power of this council for some given here, because as the city attorney said, and as the city manager said, this is not recommended, and I see no value to it, and I'm not gonna vote for it.
I have to concur with that assessment, sir.
Well, of course, I concur, but our job is to try to persuade Marty now.
No, I already made it clear she's not gonna be persuaded.
Well, hold on, hold on. That's not what she said? She said her mind is open?
Yeah, it is.
Well, can I finish? Can I finish my statement?
Your person tried to get it.
Can I, can I finish?
Yes, sir. Great.
She said earlier her mind is open, and she can be convinced otherwise. I'm gonna take as much time as I can possibly get to try to convince her.
No comment, public.
Because I've-
It seems that my mind has been made up by Leslie, by Bruce, and, uh, Mr. Parker. They know better than I do what is going on in my mind, so.
Well, I mean-
You spent a good deal of time sharing what was in your mind, and everything you said was, "You're not gonna do it unless it counts." So, that's what you said, and that's what I heard you say.
I also asked our attorney if there was a way to mitigate this. I might be suggesting-
Why would we wanna do that and still take a chance to give it up?
I don't understand that. That doesn't make sense how we need to do it.
Yeah, we are.
You would have to have a four-fifth majority of the city council. It doesn't give up the power at all. It listens to the voters.
Puts it out there to where we can use it, in order to satisfy-
And then, if you need to make a change, you would require a higher threshold on the city council to pass it.
Can I make one sec, one point? I think what you're getting at is that there is, you know, perhaps a constituency of voters out there that would, um, like to see the regulations that we worked so hard to create, which is mostly not permitted, but permitted with conditional use permits, and an oversight process, and a lengthy one, in the, that, in all cases essentially. There's a few permit, permitted in there. Um, then, so, so, I think what you're getting, I'm trying to understand where, where you're coming from, which is that there's this constituency of voters in this, in the city that wants to see that undone, and, and would, would vote to do that.
From, I don't know, it could be.
Okay, so, my, my point is, this is not related. That the, the, the proper method in, is it Prop 13? That outlines in our California constitution how voters should take action through a ballot measure? If that constituency exists, then let it happen through the, the correct channel that's, you know, that-
It's California constitution says- So, why wouldn't you have anything against, you know, a provision that allows the voters?
There is a provision that allows the voters to do exactly what you're saying. It's called the initiative process. And that initiative process actually has-
And without giving up the, without giving up this power on the city council, the city council would have to have a much higher threshold that it would have to pass it by at least a four-fifth vote.
And that would be a four-fifths vote to put the regulations back in place, is that the idea?
No, to change anything on the ordinance. And I, I, to me, that seems like a reasonable, uh, yeah, compromise.
Well, I-
Can I say a question? The, the voters voted for Leslie's shop. Okay, now what we're trying to do, what you're trying to do is just say, "Let's, let's make them vote for it again."
Dave, hold on, can I, I'm just-
Nothing I said was wrong?
Well, the voters didn't vote about any individual person, and we shouldn't go around naming individual businesses. It has nothing to do with that.
Sorry.
It was the, it was an industry-wide vote, and it was 65% of Dunsmere.
63.
Okay? That's still a pretty big majority these days.
Yeah, they voted 63% to accept Proposition 64.
That's correct.
That's, that's, that's what happened.
Yes, and it's, and to Mr. Kenny's point, if the voters in the state of California and the citizens of Dunsmere said, "We want to give power to the city to regulate grocery stores and tax them," then we would have that authority, because the voters gave us that authority. That's what the voters did in Prop 64 when they voted for it. So, us exercising that power, there's nothing, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. Plus, there's so much in here that gives it a range, and so little that actually is permitted. I just think that, including this, against the advice of our attorney-
That your attorney just gave the compromise solution. So, you're against the compromise solution, but that too.
No, I don't, I don't fully understand that compromise. Maybe, Mr. Kenny, can you clarify?
Uh, the, the compromise solution has the same problems with it as the original thing does. You're sur, you're surrendering your authority. The first, the first case is, let's back up a minute. If the, if the voters of Dunsmere don't want cannabis operations in the city, they can bring in, they can bring in initiative. They can ban it, and that's the end of it. The city council doesn't want cannabis operations in the city. The city council, this city council or any future city council can ban it. What this measure would do, or you can permit it, what this-
Which we've done.
Right?
Which we've done. This council voted against.
And, and this, and this, this is a taxing measure. It doesn't permit anything.
Right, it's just a taxing measure.
Right, you still, the city council still, still, still decides what they're gonna permit, where they're gonna permit it.
Correct.
Yeah, they, but if you pass this, you're surrendering some of that.
Because of Section 6 only.
Right.
Because this isn't just a taxing measure, it's a taxing measure plus this extra thing.
No, it doesn't, the law, they've permitted, what, the voters, doesn't give the voters any more authority than they already have. This is simply the-
So, go to your vote and point by, you proposed a compromise, but you don't really like the compromise.
I don't, I don't like the compromise, because it has the same flaws that, that this has.
Why?
Because it says, "You can, you can only do what you already have the authority to do, but you have to have four-fifths vote." You have the authority now to do something. This city council and future city councils, under these and different circumstances, the city council has the right to do what it wants to do. Of course, it has to have the support of the people, so the people can address that issue. Uh, but what you're saying is, we, we have, the, the city council acts by three majority of city council, three city council members, just to say, "Wait a minute, in this issue, we're gonna require four." Now, there are certain, certain legislations, like the one we're dealing with right now, that's causing this problem. If we're gonna submit one of these taxing measures, the law says you have to have four-fifths vote. That's not our law.
So, when do we have four-fifths vote, Mr. Kenny?
To put something on the ballot, that's one example.
What type of measures?
Very few. One, one, one would be this one, one, call it, one if you wanna put a measure on the ballot like this, another if you wanna declare an emergency, uh, one if you wanna do a supplemental appropriation. I don't know if that's a county, so I don't think so. Uh, so, that's the only ones I can really think of, we require a four-fifth vote. But they're very unusual circumstances. They're not normal business operation.
Okay, I know.
So, can we have a vote on the motion then?
On what motion? I said I do, I don't mind getting-
Okay, I, I'm, there was a motion to remove it before, and I seconded it. This is our discussion. It was lengthy.
Yes, I'm, I'm voting to remove it.
Okay, can you call the vote, Mr. Mayor?
I'll call the vote. Wait, we don't have a whole, we're lengthy.
I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, Dave, Dave made a motion.
Okay.
And the motion was to omit Section 6, called nullification, and I seconded the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
It was unanimous.
And I would like to address this council. I am, as a veteran member, and a voting member of this council, and I have much respect for your opinion or dissatisfaction with something as I would expect you to have in mind. I told you that I have an open mind between two, like, two, uh, statements that our city, uh, attorney said, persuaded me that that was not in the course. Really dislike it. Actually, dislike is a really not a strong enough word. When somebody tells me what I am thinking, you have no idea.
Mr. Mayor, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one thing? I just wanna say thank you, Marty, for keeping an open, open mind on the issue.
I did have an open mind. If you know me well enough, when I say I have an open mind, I actually believe in that.
And, and I'm simply thanking you for keeping an open mind through what was a frustrating process.
Thank you.
That's all. There are a few more issues.
Do you have to look at the top and the bottom?
Yeah, there's still, there's still a lot to consider here, um, with, with regards to rates, especially given-
Yes, I would like to take the break, if nothing else, just to cool down.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Thank you.
The number there.
Back in order. Okay, so, um, let's talk about the top number.
What are we talking about?
What do we wanna say now?
Are you on a resolution, or are you on a law?
I just wanna look at the issues. So, the issues right now would be the numbers we wanna deal with.
Yeah, we'll be the resolution first.
Resolution.
A resolution of 350 per driveway, is that right, Bryce?
Uh, well-
And you had said that you were really comfortable with the 275?
Let me give it back to you now, since you've got the numbers, you know, the, 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 so, let's see if you can call this right now.
The past course, can we just draw this? The past course has not dealt with this whatsoever.
I know, and I'm giving, giving the opportunity as the chair of the task force, to guide this through this law.
Thank you, and I'll be myself. You have some true chair, that can be, but, um, thank you. The, the issue, as it seems to me, is the, the overall tax rate of the 10% cap and the 5% initial. We have testimony from the planner at Mount Shasta that that, that seems too high. I've got a lot of other anecdotes that seem like it's within reasonable range. So, I don't know exactly where we come down on that. But we do know that our neighbors of the north set it at three, a, a cap of five, and set it at three.
Their cap was higher, wasn't it?
They set the cap at five, and they set it at three. So, I mean, I'm fine with the up to 10%, that's okay, you know. There's, there's a chance that that could, you know, because that number is in the written part of the, the ballot initiative, right? That could scare people off, just like the 20,000 would could scare people off. I don't know what's gonna scare people off right now, I don't think it really is. But, um, but I do like the flexibility to be able to go up to that. I mean, a lot of the city are doing that. And maybe Mount Shasta will want to go up higher than five, and they're locked in at five. So, generally, I'm okay with the 10. But the initial of five, right in the middle of that, could, could be seen as too high. And I, I just like the sort of political gamesmanship of being less than that yet, at least on the initial, um, until they have time to change it. But then we have time to change it too. So, I would, I would say that, that would be a, a good number to go forward with.
275?
275, and a cap of 10. I'm fine with that.
And by the way, 275 with a cap of 10.
Okay, and on the other one, the, this is the cultivation part, well-
It's the cultivation part.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we're at the ordinance.
Are you on the resolution, or are you on the ordinance?
Right.
Oh, we're talking about both.
Yeah, that's what I was saying before, did you?
I thought we were talking about the resolution, you're trying to, we're talking about-
The resolution says it's anywhere.
Is it, the cap is 10?
Hold on, hold on.
No, wait a second, wait a second. Backup, Bryce, fake backup, because you were talking about 10, and then you went over to cultivation. If you're capping 10% on gross retail-
Okay, sure.
The initial is 5%. What they do want to drop it to?
2.75.
No, oh, that's two, that's half of it.
Well, then we're gonna be 2% higher than our neighbors of the north.
Okay, well, then drop it to three.
Then we'd be the same as our neighbors of the north.
Right, and?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, market-wise, let's be a quarter percent higher in market.
Hey, wait a minute, this doesn't deal with consumers, this deals with the actual businesses.
Yes, but they're not, they're not selling at prices to consumers. I mean, that's gonna be-
Then we have any more room to accept any more businesses. They are coming here.
So, 2.75?
I'm saying that the market for people who wanna buy cannabis recreationally or medically is-
That has nothing to do with this. This is a tax on business.
That's correct.
Right.
And the, and the taxes that we impose on businesses inform what prices those businesses charge the consumers.
Right, so-
And so therefore-
Since nobody knows what is, what is going to be, why can't we just not, you know, try it in this, and the first opportunity, business working out, we drop it?
I, I think that's a fine strategy, and I think, starting with a quarter percent lower-
And that makes it four, now, 4.75%.
No, 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 quarters are lower than Mount Shasta.
Oh, I'm not really basing everything we do on what Mount Shasta does.
I'm, I'm just saying that we exist in the same market as Mount Shasta, and we.
We exist in-
And we're not Shasta late, but, you know.
We exist in different markets, Bryce.
It, 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 just a, I think-
I can make the argument with peripheral, you know, business, you know, anybody being here, I can take all of that, you know. Basically, everything that we do, on what Mount Shasta or what Shasta Lake City does, does not really go that way.
I totally agree that we should not base everything we do on what Mount Shasta does. We have an obligation as elected representatives to base our-
Yeah, we have, we have, basically, we have a, that, we have a, I'm sorry, and I, I apologize, because it did the very same thing in terms of, I think, why don't we just finish?
We have an obligation to do what's right for our city, not what's right for Mount Shasta.
Right.
My thinking, and it could be short sighted, is that what might be best for our city coffers is to have a slightly lower rate than, than what is our competitor in, in that sense, because that might entice consumers to shop at Dunsmere Dispensary rather than a, Mount Shasta's, that's all, it's, it's, it's a micro point, basically. But I don't think that we should be at 5% necessarily, which is 2% higher, which could actually really move, move the market. Again, we don't know, and we're allowing, we're allowing ourselves a range, so we can move it.
And that's, the only thing I can overemphasize, that we don't know.
But if you're gonna- Can we go to 3% and compromise your way for the 25, or quarter?
Well, they're probably right now about the 10% ratio.
The, the 10, and the initial of, what is in here, 5, changing that to 3 rather than 2.75? Sure, that's fine.
No, I, I, I didn't wanna drop it down to that low, I think, let's go 3.75.
I mean, I'm uncomfortable with us being higher, given the testimony we received, which is that-
But you just said that you're not basing your, you know, what is good for Dunsmere, you know, based on what is good for another city. We are much further than Mount Shasta.
We don't wanna scare them away, though, Marty.
How are we going to scare away a real shop, David?
What happens is, when you go to a gas station, you look and see, "How much is this gas station, and how much is that gas station?"
Yeah.
When people are trying to decide if they're gonna go to Dunsmere to buy their product, or they're going to go to Mount Chastis to buy their product, if we put a higher tax on it, they're going to go to Mount Chastis. That's what he's talking about, about looking at Mount Chastis as a competitor in our local market.
And I tell you that this...
The ability, Bruce, to create a much better analogy than I could come up with. I think that's exactly right. I don't know, that, that industry has been established for a long time and those price changes really are competitive in that way. I don't know if it'll be, if it'll shake down the consumers in that exact same way. She's right, we do not know.
I think that there's a lot more factors than people buy something that's consumable and just the price. It's possible to buy a reputation, it's possible to buy...
Oh, absolutely.
It's going to be by a lot of different factors. I am looking at numbers, okay? And having done some crunching of numbers of just what I could possibly, you know, get my hands on, even this is going to be low for us. So I can compromise to go down, you know, a percentage point.
I'm sure, what numbers do you have?
Oh, I, you know, did a lot of crunching numbers over the weekend and, you know, it's just, we can't compete with some of the other cities. We never will be able to and even this is going to be difficult to raise any kind of revenue. I don't care what anybody out there in the audience says. So based on that, I will agree to drop it by a percentage point. But I am not going to base my decisions on what is good for, for the city of Dunsmere and raising revenues based on figures for a city that's almost twice as big as us or for a city that is three times and it's already pretty much half that. People can't either get a license there or they have no room to be in there. So they're looking to be here because we haven't done anything yet.
I, I don't know how a higher tax rate helps move factors in, in any way there.
It helps the city raise our values.
Maybe, but isn't it possible that we could raise more revenue with a lower tax rate?
But that's why we have flexibility. And didn't we disagree that we have flexibility? And it turns out that that is way too high. You know, you could look at it this way. It could be that we're at the right range and everybody else is going to be upping their tax rate up.
Let me make a suggestion here. We, we're going back and forth on these different numbers in order to compromise to come up with something. And I would say that when three people are looking in one way and one person is looking at another, there should be a motion in towards the three that recognize that we'd rather be competitive with our full, full market.
Be competitive, I'm out of it. I don't know. I'm saying no.
May I make a comment here?
Yes.
What you're arguing about is non-consequential.
Right.
This is the initial rate.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a number you put in there so that you know what it starts at. The measure passed, it could be changed the next day.
Could be changed up or down.
Right. But I, okay, I, I think I disagree. I don't think it's totally inconsequential, you know? This is going to be an ordinance that...
Well, this, this requires forfeit's votes, you know, so...
Yes, of course. I understand. I'm, I don't think that we should be higher than the rest of the market in, in our little micro-market here in Northern, the Northern California, extreme Northern California. And since we do have the benefit of knowing what some other cities have said as their initial rate, and they might go higher or lower too.
They haven't passed anything either yet, Bryce.
Mount Chastis passed the three percent.
What did they pass? They have...
They're on the ballot in November.
Yeah, they haven't passed anything either.
Oh, I'm sorry, but their city council proposed a number.
Right. They're as clueless as we are.
That's right, but if they're going to tax it at all, it's going to start at three percent there.
Right. We're going to start, you know, at a different number. But they haven't voted, the citizens there have voted for them. A lot of cities, a lot of cities are putting this up talent for the first time in another year.
Right.
Because this is the first time it's come up.
Yes, all that is true.
We could be playing guessing game, we could be right on the limit and everybody else is wrong, or we could be wrong and everybody else is right. Nobody tells at this point.
Mr. Gray.
But isn't, isn't it possible though? I mean, this is what...
Everything is possible, Bryce.
This is what, um, sort of conservative economists have been telling us for my, at least my entire lifetime, was that a lower tax rate could increase revenues. So that's certainly true, right? If, if there was more economic activity because of a lower tax rate and they were more competitive and that industry was slightly more competitive in this region than another region, I'm just saying why not start out at, you know, the same or slightly lower?
Why don't we start now and if you don't like five percent, can we start now at four? We're still up in that there.
Maybe. I mean, you said three point seven five earlier.
No, you, I, I, I got to accept that you were, you were talking about, you, you made some cultivation with the, with the...
Four?
I, I mean, I think four's too high, but, um, I mean, I don't know why we would want to be higher than our neighbor who's doing the same thing. There, you know, people, it's a small community, they talk to each other. It's four percent fair, it's three percent fair, I'll jump up there, you know, until it changes.
No, yeah, at a certain point, you keep talking about is that that's a consumer. This is a tax on business, Bryce.
But they're related. They're certainly related, right?
They're somewhat related because, yes, the, the business isn't going to absorb all the other costs. It's going to somehow pass it on to the, to the consumer. Correct. But they don't know any more than we do. And I'm just saying, why don't we start slightly higher? We can, we can, uh, change these figures. You can, you can drop it to nothing.
I, I mean, I would say we disagree on...
Obviously, we disagree. We are going to disagree a lot, Bryce.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I made a motion that we tabled this till next week and we call it meeting next week.
I would not be in favor of that. We've come so far, Dave.
I'm not in favor of that either.
We, we can have a recess if you, or we can have a brief recess if you need.
Okay, that's all, that's a brief recess. Point of order, Dave.
Okay.
You want a recess? Make it three.
General Sales and Transactions Act to a Tax Cannabis Retail Act is a resolution authorizing arguments and rebuttals, arguments and...
Yeah, that's a separate one.
I'm sorry. I, I understand, Dave, with respect.
Go for it. Let's just do it.
These resolutions have titles and if we're not going to have a number so that we can read it by number and title only, we've got to read it by title only.
Three.
Can I make a motion, Dave?
Go for it.
I move that we pass the resolution titled, "Resolution of the City Council, the City of Dunsmere Authorizing Ballot Arguments and Rebuttal Arguments for the Commercial Cannabis Tax Measure Numbered at a Later Date."
And amended. As amended.
Well, that one, that one doesn't have any amendments. That one does not have any amendments.
This one?
No, this one.
That's what he had to use this one.
The one you read was the one you're talking about.
This is the one he just read.
Let's start with the one that doesn't have any amendments.
Okay.
That's, that's the one that is arguments and rebuttal arguments is the one you are just read there.
Yep, that's the title that I read. Does that...
That's not...
I seconded it.
Why not?
You just read it?
We've got to pass the vote.
We've got to pass the vote.
Is there a motion? Is there a second now?
Yes, I just seconded it.
Oh, wait a minute, are you going to fill in the names?
What names?
The names of the people that are pointing to do the consultation.
Oh.
Oh, good idea.
Good idea.
And the last question.
Who's going to do that?
It, it doesn't matter, the city council, my personal...
I bet we accuse you to, uh...
No, I have to do the impartial amount.
Well, you have to do the impartial amount.
Well, how are we supposed to... How, how does this usually happen, Josh?
You, the reason I ask you to do this is because when there's a time to respond to